Good evening. I have 7:00 PM here in Historic Town Hall, August 21st, 2025. As we convene, please be reminded that these proceedings are being televised and recorded by Sandwich Community Television. May we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on, please, to our initial opportunity for public comment. Yes, sir. State your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Yes, good evening. Sean Murray, Polk's Metal Sandwich. Good evening, everybody, Mr. Chairman, Select Board, Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager. I've been following the ongoing discussion. Yeah, green light's on.
Okay.
All right, is that better?
There you go.
All right.
Thank you.
So, again, Sean Murray Sandwich. So, I've been following the ongoing discussion in regard to the proposed DPW fire station. And after watching the dialogue, it'll last meeting two weeks ago, I think I've heard enough. I'll preface by saying that we all know the water infrastructure project is a proverbial 800-pound gorilla in the room. The cost of this project and the accompanying future debt exclusions loom large over this community. Now, that said, I've found the dialogue from this board on the $58 million DPW fire project both unimaginative and downright pedestrian. You can do better. Think strategically. Okay, we need new buildings for DPW and Fire One. Got it, I'm with you. But there's no need to panic. Sky is not yet falling on these buildings. I mean, how many decades did Town Manager wait for consolidated town office, and he had a river running through the basement? So, how long did the townspeople wait for a community center or a new police-fire complex? I could go on. The previous Select Boards used strategic, long-term vision, creativity, and intelligent opportunism to accomplish their goals. Think strategically. Simply piling new debt on top of existing long-term obligations or trying to piecemeal the projects does nothing to alleviate the underlying problems. Current market conditions, tax burdens, and an aging demographic, coupled with the looming water infrastructure project, make this a very difficult time to take on further debt. This is particularly true for our largest and growing demographic of aging citizens. Now, I happen to help out over at the Council on Aging and deal directly with this population. This kind of added debt can put them on the trash train out of town. So, think strategically. How about a two-pronged approach of saving and strategizing debt retirement? You can establish a capital stabilization fund with a clear delineation of its purpose for the town. I'll say that again. You can establish a capital stabilization fund with a clear delineation of its purpose for the town. Town Manager has said the Regional Dispatch Center may save us approximately $700,000 per year. You can capture and appropriate these savings within the levy limit. You can use free cash or overlay surplus. You can use proceeds from the sale of surplus property. You can create dedicated revenue streams like the one on the agenda tonight. Get innovative, be strategic. Next, you can look at the debt schedules as I have. Suffice to say, by Fiscal 31, we reduce non-exempt debt by $400,000, golf course, and exempt debt by another $500,000. That's significant. Heck, by Fiscal 37, we reduce the exempt debt burden yet another $750,000. Tie the savings and debt reduction together and create a strategic plan of action. It won't get you all the way financially, but sure will go a long way in showing due diligence, innovation, and a genuine concern of the public trust. Now, you have the A-Team over there with Bud and Heather. Help them, guide them, set the strategic direction for the town. It is what you elected to do. I'll leave it with that. And I had one housekeeping item, Mr. Chairman. There seemed to have been some confusion last meeting from the Town Charter. I happen to have served on a Charter Review Committee back in the day, so I brought Town Charter page in question here. Section 4.2.8, under Prohibitions, Paragraph C, "The Board of Selectmen and its members shall deal with town officers and employees who are subject to the supervision of the Town Manager solely through the Town Manager." So, I hope that clears up that confusion. So, and that's all I've got, and thank you, guys. I really appreciate it and all you do, and have a great rest of the summer.
Thank you, you as well. Okay, skip down to Town Manager Report. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Yes, and you introduced yourself too. My apologies. State your name and address, please.
My name is Stephanie Farla, and I live at 18 Village Drive. I'm here to speak up to keep the momentum going for safety updates at the Chase Road and Service Road intersection. I know we've all seen the chatter on Facebook about it, but it is something that I hold very closely to me. I have been a resident of that area of Sandwich for nearly 29 years. I grew up on Bayview Road, and now I live off of Old County. I drive that stretch of road nearly every day. I'm also a registered nurse of 15 years, and I'm currently working in the emergency room. So, I feel that those two credentials give me some clout in what I'm about to say. Over the years, we all know that there has been an increase in vehicle activity on that section of road, whether it's from the residents in the area because there are just more of them, or they're using more back roads, to the tourists who use it because of GPS. There were several car accidents at that intersection in a short span of time in the early summer, it was like late May, early June. In a hospital setting, if we had a cluster of significant events like that, we would call that, and what ultimately culminated in someone ending up in critical condition, we would call that a sentinel event. It would immediately impact policy and procedure. Things would change overnight. I realize that in a town setting, that is not necessarily possible, but I do believe that it should create a wave of change pretty, in an expedited way. On May 30th, there was a critical accident there. I am going to speak about it rather descriptively because I would like everyone to understand what the experience was like. I had just come home from the end of a shift at work. I had pulled up to the end of the westbound Old Exit 4 ramp and was about to turn onto Chase Road when I heard a crash, and I looked to my right at the Chase and Service Road intersection and saw the crash happening. It was a large truck and a small coupe car. That experience led to me finding a young man who was 20 years old, nearly dying in the front seat, and I held his hand and neck in my hands, and I felt his blood trickling down my arms, and I heard him gasping and wheezing through his own blood, and I felt it spraying on my face as I held his head up so he could breathe, and I screamed his name to keep him lucid or conscious of any sort. I felt the panic of a mother who could be losing their child. I had known him for merely seconds, and I still feel that panic almost every day. From what I've heard, he's alive and nearly wasn't. That intersection needs safety updates immediately, and I realize that there are different circumstances surrounding all car accidents, but when there are four in a row and one young man nearly dies, that should constitute immediate change. There are a few areas that I believe are lacking that we can improve on. Both sides of the service road, as you approach that intersection, they do kind of a swoop and curve, up, like down and then up a hill and around a curve. It actually supports kind of accelerating a car, and since people already drive fast on those roads, what is unfortunate is that the sign that shows that there's an upcoming stop is at the top of those areas where people have already accelerated up to. Both signs are partially obscured by tree branches as well, so they're very hard to see. The visibility at the west side of the service road is cut off by an embankment. Cars have to drive out into Chase Road to see around that. There's also limited visibility as you come up Chase Road in a northbound fashion where you come around a curve, and there are a lot of trees and shrubs that, if cut back, I believe would at least improve visibility as you come up to the intersection. And then, lastly, the south side of Chase, as you approach that intersection where the Highway West Exit Ramp is, is rather wide, and I have actually myself witnessed cars drift to the right as they turn to turn onto the service road, almost creating a second lane that isn't really supposed to be there. What I propose as at least improvements that I could think of as someone who does not work in that environment is to have the stop signs at each end of the service road be flashing, that all four directions of the road have signs that say that there is a dangerous intersection approaching. I think we can all agree that it's a dangerous intersection. It would be important to at least warn people of that. Residents know, but tourists, they don't know. Improving the visibility of those two areas that I highlighted with either removing that embankment with perhaps a small retaining wall, or at least cutting back the trees and shrubs so that people can see over it. And then, consider making it a four-way stop, and I appreciate that some people will find that undesirable, but in the end, your loved one could be the person that is at that intersection when there's a bad car accident, and I think it's worth the update. So, I appreciate you all for listening to that, and thank you.
Thank you for your observations. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none. Skip down to Town Manager Report.
Just a couple of updates in terms of meetings. Our next one, in light of the Labor Day holiday, is Thursday, September 11th. It looks like, and I'll explain why in a second, it looks like the Finance Committee might be meeting on Tuesday night, September 2nd, at 6:00, for a remote meeting only, and I'll explain why quickly. On Tuesday night at their meeting, there was extensive discussion about the DPW fire project. In addition, it led to other conversations about trying to assess the condition of school and town buildings. So, to cut to the chase, eventually, a vote was taken to transfer money from the Reserve Fund, which the Finance Committee controls, $135,000 for the school department to do an assessment of their buildings, and up to $50,000 for us to continue to address any issues and progress on the design, layout, location of the DPW fire project. So, that passed unanimously of the members there. Patrick had a great point. It wasn't listed on the agenda, but we felt it might fly under other matters not reasonably anticipated, so the vote was taken on the condition that Town Council gave us the thumbs up that it was okay, and the next morning I got the thumbs down. So, Town Council said, "Nice try." Where it was actually transferring appropriated funds, they felt it would be more kosher and safer if it was listed on a future agenda. Town Council did say, like, any discussion, even remotely related to any of the topics on the agenda, would have been fine, but just in case there ever was a question on an open-meeting law, they felt it was more prudent just to re-advertise and hold that meeting. So, the goal is to hold a meeting really focused on that one issue, so it would probably have two components. One, to rescind the vote from the prior meeting, which was last, this Tuesday night, and then put on there to reconsider those two transfers, the $135,000 from the Reserve Fund for School Facility Assessment, and then $50,000 to assist additional work on the project that we've been talking about. So, we're just checking everyone's schedules as of, like, an hour ago. So far, no one said they couldn't make it, but we're still waiting to hear back from people. So, if that gets scheduled, I'll be sure to let you know. But again, the goal would be Tuesday night, September 2nd, at 6:00 in a Zoom meeting format. And then, just a couple of other quick things to update you on. Some beach season updates from the Rec Department. I should preface these remarks by saying it seems like colleges are asking students to return earlier and earlier, and several students, as you'd expect, who've worked hard all summer, want a little break before they go back to college. So, we're, our seasonal staff is dwindling significantly every day, and so the lifeguards will guard Peters Pond at Oak Crest Cove through tomorrow, August 22nd. We'll guard Snake Pond again through tomorrow, August 22nd. Then, after that, the gates at Town Neck Beach, First Beach, and the boardwalk will be staffed until August 26th. And then, after that, we don't have staff. The beach supervisors who help oversee and the gate guards, they will continue to be on through the Labor Day weekend, so they'll be assisting as needed, but we won't have the normal amount of staff that we typically do. So, just wanted to let the public know that. And then, lastly, a little-known part of the state budget that was passed less than a month ago included requests from the governor that would allow on-premises beer and wine license holders, i.e. restaurants that have just a beer and wine license, to go through a process and ask the local licensing authority to convert that to an all-alcohol license. So, in order for this to take place, the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission issued some guidance. There was some question on the guidance, and so Coleman and Page actually asked them to reconsider, so they did clarify that in order for this to take place, the local legislative body, not the licensing authority, has to grant the ability for you guys, for the Select Board, to consider it. So, that means Town Meeting would have to accept a provision of the general laws that would give you the right to consider these on a case-by-case basis. If that passes Town Meeting, there's actually five businesses in town that this applies to. They could approach you to have their license converted from a beer and wine, you know, on-premises, meaning only in the restaurant, to an all-alcohol. The Board can consider and make any decision it wants. So, here's the interesting part. If they ever go to sell the property and they don't revert it back to a beer and wine only, they lose the license, and it comes back to the town as a beer and wine, not an all-alcohol. I think the fear there is that longstanding so-called quota that a number of the towns have, set by the state, which I know Mass Municipal Association and others have been trying to alter for many years, but to no avail. So, it's a quite confusing process. Melissa attended a seminar online yesterday, so we're as up to speed as we can be, but if and when we consider articles for our next Town Meeting, that might be one we should talk about if you want to put before the voters. So, just to be clear, if this went through, a restaurant asks to go to all-alcohol on-premises, say the Board approves it, before they would go to sell it or relinquish it, they would have to come back to the Board, convert it back to a beer and wine, then that could be part of any sale. If they didn't do that, they lose the license, and that's not acquired as part of the sale. It comes back to the town. So, there's some, some quite unique provisions, and so that's something we should talk about as it gets closer. And that was it.
Thank you. Any questions for Bud? And yes, I agree we should expand that discussion a bit. Correspondents' Statements and Announcements. Okay, just a, just a quick, a couple, please. School Committee met on August 13th, their first meeting of the '25-'26 school year. Progress. Bike Ways met on the 18th. It was an interesting presentation from the Cape Cod Commission on the Route 6A Visioning Study. Every, any member of the public has an access to this study and can make appropriate comments And lastly, as was part of a prior conversation, the Finance Committee met on the Tuesday, the 19th, and progress. Anybody else? Okay. If I may, I'd like to skip down to an item under New Business. The recommended zoning Board of Appeals appointment to Brendan Brides as a full member through June 30th of 2029. There's a letter from the Chair in our packets, and... Does anybody have any comments or concerns? Okay. Bud and Heather?
I would move that we appoint Brendan Brides as a full member to the Zoning Board of Appeals through June 30th, 2029. If Mr. Brides wants to make any comments, I think we should give him that opportunity, but he certainly has my full support.
Second. Motion by Mr. Sampson, second by Mr. Hockter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, zero. It's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Brides. Staff meeting.
None.
None, right? All business. DPW Fire Substation Project Follow-Up.
Yeah, so as Charlie mentioned, on Tuesday night, the Finance Committee talked more about the project. In your packet was a summary of the comments that we heard in mid-July. Patrick was there as well, so, and Heather, so the four of us were there. It's hard, I think it would be hard to summarize everything we heard, but it's fair to say it ran the gamut from, you know, I don't think anyone was questioning the need. The questions about the location had more to do, I would say, with some of the site costs, and is there, is there a better spot for DPW, some of which we've looked at previously, but I know through a follow-up that we've done internally that we're going to take another look at that. And I think there was a lot of discussion about the cost, you know, questioning on timing with other town needs. Just so the public's hearing, the same thing that we talked about Tuesday night, there's really, that we can all think of, there's only two major expenses that we can foresee, one being wastewater, as was mentioned earlier. Just knowing the timing of that and the permits that are needed and the construction that has to take place, and how you actually go out to bond and when you need to actually go out to bond, that likely isn't coming before the voters in terms of impacting their tax payments until probably, you know, eight to 10 years from now. And there's really not a lot of clarity that we can provide on that as we're trying to work with the state and federal regulatory agencies to find out what we can do and where's the best place to put things. I did stress that through the current 2% Water Infrastructure Fund money that we're collecting, that will provide us enough money to do the required engineering for designing and permitting the collection and conveyance system. It's enough money to do the design of the treatment and disposal, and there's a lot of smaller things we'll need to do as well, like those should be fine. It's really, once we go to do the bigger work and the actual construction of those systems, when we would have to go back to voters for a debt exclusion. And then, the other larger project that was talked about was focusing on school building needs. We did finally get, which I think we talked about at a recent meeting, we did get a quote back from an architectural firm on a cost to go ahead and do that work. So, a review of the buildings, systems, and trying to make sure that they're designed for 21st century learning. The cost that the architectural firm gave was $135,000, so that was why the Finance Committee took the vote that they did. And then, that same firm gave a quote for doing municipal buildings, square footage-wise, which are significantly, in all caps, less square footage than the school buildings, but the price we got for that was $155, which we didn't feel was warranted, and so we've actually already started to undertake on our own, through our Facilities Department, Engineering Department, and others, a study of our own buildings. We're fortunate in the sense we've gotten a lot of support the last 10 years to address some of our longer-term building needs, except for the ones that we're talking about with DPW and the downtown fire substation. So, we don't feel we need additional funds. If there are any buildings that are identified that need extra help, we could ask for a price from that same firm just on that one building, and I think it would be significantly less. So, that's how we plan to proceed on that. Again, I don't, I don't want to try to single out costs because depending on which Finance Committee member talked, there was a lot of, I don't know if it's differences of opinion, but I guess differences of opinion on, on what they felt was the best way to go, what the timing was. I mean, it's fair to say everyone's concerned about what the market rate is right now for cost per square foot of any municipal work anywhere. And we don't control that, but that's quite sobering. And I would just say, you know, we're looking at trying to do some internal work with the project team, which Charlie and Patrick sit on, to try to fine-tune or lessen any design work that we could take out of it, you know, double-check some things in terms of location and layout and things like that. So, I don't, I don't know a lot of what else to say, but if any, any member wants to add, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't want to take any time away from, from Board members, but I think the questions that Bud and Bill and the Finance Committee Chair laid out for the committee to respond to were, do you agree with the need? Do you agree with the locations? And, you know, what are your thoughts on cost? And I thought it was one of the best discussions that we've had. It was very thorough. There was a lot of detail. Each individual member gave them, gave their own views on where they were. I'd say overall, there was really broad support for need, although still discussion about the community may not be in the same place as the Finance Committee. The community may not really fully understand the need or the critical nature of particularly public works in the fire substation. So, some work continued, needed to be done there. In terms of location, there was a divergence of opinion, but, but clarity on what members thought they needed in order to conclude their thinking. So, I thought that was helpful. So, some more helpful direction to us on, on the type of information that would be useful for future decision-making. And I think all of it was done in the spirit of wanting to help the community, which was very positive, and an understanding that doing nothing is more than likely not going to be an option for us. And then, of course, in terms of cost, everyone's challenged by, by what the cost is. It's a big number, and really that discussion, you know, centered around, do we... do we phase, do we look at other locations to help the phasing? Um, so that really drove, I think, more of the, the phasing discussion and the alternate site discussion as much as, you know, individual preferences around site. So that was my takeaway, I would say it was overall, you know, in terms of a community dialogue about a project of that magnitude, it was a good discussion.
I agree. Anybody else with any thoughts on that one?
Bud, I'm gonna, and Heather, I'm gonna ask my, um, you're joking, I said this before, my Mike Miller question, and that is, if, if we were to have this be approved, you know, hypothetically at spring meeting, when would the debt actually hit the tax bill in a realistic scenario?
We, we've, if it, hypothetically, it, it passed in the spring, like you said, um, the consultants, especially the design team, said it would take about a year to finalize their plans, get construction documents ready and go out to bid. So we wouldn't have, uh, bids back for probably, I would guess, twelve to eighteen months? And then, once the bids came back and we made an award, you need to be careful on larger projects, if you bond all the money in the beginning, because there are penalties to the town if you earn too much interest while you hold that big lump of money. So you purposely delay the bonding, usually until you're well into the construction, but, you know, they would lay out, um, with the, whoever the general contractor was who got the bid award, you know, we would look at timing, um, what's unique if they were bid as one, I think as the board has talked about, you really need to build one thing to move it before you build the second, so they can't happen concurrently, although the work you're doing is setting you up, you know, to move faster on the second part. Um, I know I'm not giving you a good answer, but it would probably be three years after the vote is taken.
And that starts to coincide with the, the debt coming off of, you know, both the regional dispatch in twenty-nine, and then the Sandwich Hollows coming off in thirty-one, so there's two years beyond.
Probably be in that ballpark, yeah, yep, yep.
So it might even, with the savings, you know, hypothetically, and if, you know, if interest rates get better.
Yeah, the hard, the hard part about those two savings is they're both within our tax levy, so, you're right, they're savings in the sense, we don't have to have those costs anymore, but unlike debt, it doesn't drop off.
Right.
Like, it would be up to town meeting on how that, that would be handled. And I think the problem, if you bond too many projects inside your levy, if budgetarily things go south down the road, you would literally be, you know, cutting people and services to pay for a building.
What, what is the, uh, estimate on the school evaluation?
Uh, the cost to do the review is a hundred thirty-five thousand.
We're potentially moving that forward based on that transfer you mentioned, right?
Yeah.
When, what's the potential timeline on something like that?
I thought they said four to six months to get a report back and then analyzing the report, and, um, you know, we've had experience with those reports in the past, so it takes a while to...
Right.
Decipher them.
It'd be like the spring.
Decide what to do, yeah.
Um, I mean, that just is a looming cost.
Yeah.
That I, I think people are going to be, uh, paying a lot of attention to and, and have a lot of concern about whatever the, the findings from that report come out, whatever they say, I don't know. I might have a couple guesses, but they're gonna go a lot farther than my guesses, my expectation.
Can't disagree with that, but the, uh, but the DPW and the fire station are, uh, emergency response, crisis responses. I think the public has a value in that as well.
I, I'm not saying that they don't. Um, I, I just, I, I look, in my opinion, about how folks, um, you know, prioritize things, and, and education is a very big area of priority for a lot of people, it doesn't mean that they don't value the, the fire department or the DPW, but, um, when folks are sending their kids to school, they, they prioritize the quality of education and they call, they prioritize the quality of that infrastructure, and we all know that, um, for a variety of reasons, the deferred maintenance at the schools is off the charts, so to speak. It's just, that's just where we are. Doesn't mean that the deferred maintenance at the DPW isn't off the charts or anything else, but I just, my opinion is that, um, there may be issues that are identified within that evaluation that become priority one-type issues as well. And if we're holding that in our hand, this, this spring, by whatever means, um, there's gonna start to be competing priorities.
Thank you. Anybody else? Patrick?
Yeah, I got the, I got the sense, um, from finance that they would wanna see the result of that study before they made a commitment towards another project. Like, that's the sense I got from that. And I don't necessarily think that's bad. And then, I just wanna remind everybody that this is normal. And, and so, when you think, oh, oh my God, we're arguing about the selectmen, arguing about how we should solve town problems. This happens on every large capital project we've ever built in the history of the town, whether it was renovating this building, or whether it was Clark-Hattad Building, or whether it was, whether, do we need a Cal? And how, what are we gonna build? Wing School. How's that gonna turn out? Well, that, that took a lot of blood, sweat and tears. It took multiple public meetings, it took changes in approach, and all of these things will flush out as long as we continue to talk about it. You, you can't not talk about it, because as we talk about it, we will develop different approaches to it, and we'll be more creative about it. And we didn't win the police and fire vote the first time around. I was on the board at the time, following that, and condensed the project to a point where we thought it was palpable for the taxpayers and the, and they went along with it. So they'll, they, taxpayers, just like anyone, sticker shock is normal. You can't believe that it could be that much money. We on the committee couldn't believe the figures when they were laid out by the consultant, because the cost had increased so radically over such a short period of time. That's not something sandwich can control, our consultants can't control it, Bud and Heather can't control it. That's the market, that's what's out there. So perhaps a little time will settle that market out. That's the other thing, is if things take a little bit longer, look at the bright side, it may settle things out in terms of more jobs being done, work being better distributed, and further from the COVID supply chain issues that drove the cost up in the first place. So I don't, I don't think we should, I don't believe there's anything we have to do right now, other than keep the project alive and recognize that it's our obligation to defend the need for it and educate the people on how we're gonna pay for it.
Well, I would like to offer as well that the scope of this project is actually conservative and functional.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anybody else?
So I, I guess, just to be extremely direct, right, what, what's the question, where do we go from here based on this discussion? Are we gonna just keep talking about this? Um, are we investigating some of the alternatives? What, what is the next step?
Sorry, the consultants are working on some things, first internally and then do more in focus groups, and then we could report out to the public as we get better data. There's some things that were brought up primarily by the finance committee in terms of location that I think we wanna go back and especially one site in particular, uh, do a little bit more research on. Um, you know, they're already been charged with looking at some of these things, which they've started, so.
Yeah, and just to amplify that, we talked, I think, the last meeting, that they are going to be meeting with Paul Tilton, the Director of Public Works, and Chief Burke to, um, identify any areas of scope that could be reduced without impacting the purpose of the facility. Um, so maybe there's two bunks per bunk room and less bunk rooms, and, uh, maybe there's less bay, bays inside and more covered canopy outside at the public works garage, so some of those things that can reduce the overall cost, so they'll be taking a good look at that. Um, we also had, did quite a bit of work in the committee on the site analysis, but it was done in, um, more of a, uh, looking at computer-based analyses with the committee without formal reports, um, so we'll need to sharpen those up and provide some of the, um, back, backup for the recommendation in terms of site, as well as the cost analysis of the alternative, so we'll produce that. Um, trying to think of what else we talked about. Um, the committee last night asked us to, uh, take a look with the fire chief at alternative sites for, uh, alternate fire station, and that's something that this board ought to, um, give some guidance and direction from when we get to that point. Um, but the best thing is probably to let the consultant do their work on the scope reduction piece, to amplify the work that they've already done on the site analysis, get back together with the committee, and then we can come back with some, you know, more specific requests for the select board. I think there's quite a bit of homework to do that needs to happen over the next several weeks.
And I would just say financially, I think one thing I wanna work on with the finance director, and, uh, you know, Heather does too, and others, is, uh, I think people forget how far we've come on, on many of these financial issues in town and, uh, how, in what good shape we are versus twenty-five years ago, like, we've come a long way. Um, so I think there's some things that we should highlight. Um, I know everyone's talking about the, I think the estimate was just over fifty-eight million, when we gave the financial impact of that, it was, we ran two, two scenarios, one at fifty-five, one at sixty million, and if you remember, if you did level debt service, which I'm not saying that's what we should do, but it could be, um, you know, for one, it was three hundred and five dollars a year, and for the higher one, it was, uh, like, almost three hundred and forty dollars a year. That was with a fairly high interest rate that we're seeing now. If things come down and those change, just to give you a perspective, the two and a half percent new group, plus new growth increase is more than that each year. So, I mean, it sounds like a massive number, but when you boil it down to what the annual payments are, it's not as, probably as extreme as people think. It, I'm not saying it doesn't impact, I'm not saying it doesn't cost more, it definitely does. But it's, it, you know, it's not as extreme, I believe, as some people think.
That comes to, on the average, seventy-five dollars a quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the challenge, and I hear what you're saying about a hundred percent, and I get the, the math, right, but perception is everything.
Yeah.
And you can go through that and, and talk to us about it, and we're listening, but perception is everything, and just one of my findings has been in conversations I've had with people is that, uh, we have the same conversations, I have the same conversations with the same people repeatedly regarding this project, and, and that's my real concern, it's not about the public understanding that there's a need that exists to do more things, right? When we, uh, made very significant investments in the, in the fire department in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, et cetera, with the new infrastructure, uh, hiring of twelve firefighters, um, you know, that was, that was a big, big deal, um, we did a lot of pieces there, um, you know, we knew that this downtown fire station project was gonna come down the pike, um, we know that there's specific advantages around where apparatus is located as far as how it would benefit taxpayers, et cetera, um, so that need exists. I mean, we, we haven't invested in any DPW infrastructure, to my knowledge, maybe ever, other than the transfer station, it would, would probably be the most recent, um, things, and that was tens of years ago, right? Um, but I, I just, people's desire and capacity to spend, I think, is limited. Um, I think the focus groups and the evaluation are very good, I think the continued feedback from the finance committee is important, but, you know, I, I still kinda desire this direct feedback from the public as much as possible, right? So one of the things I'm just thinking about is, you know, how do you poll the public and do it effectively? So we can certainly have some, um, public hearings if we wanted to, or, or feedback sessions, I don't know what the timeline goes to, you could put a non-binding question on the spring ballot, um, but that's, it's August, so that's, that's a bit of the ways in the future, right? But, um, at the end of the day, i- if we were to bring this forward with debt exclusion, whatever that looks like, separated projects, whatever it is, it's gonna require town meeting support, it's gonna require ballot box support, um, it's not a small thing. The, the projects that we have done so successfully over the, the last several years were, uh, far less expensive than this, right? The, the Santander project, um, although the costs were higher than what we anticipated, it was about a six million dollar project, which still is...
That was paid in cash.
Unbelievable, right?
In borrow money.
There's no debt, and it was a six million dollar project, we could never build that building for six million dollars. Um, the, the Center for Active Living project, right, we, we handled that a specific way.
Library renovations.
Library renovations, right, so, I mean, this is just, this is an outlier amongst the other things that we've recently done, and, you know, I, I've kinda said this before, but if we're gonna run to bat with something, and, and I don't, I'm not discounting the need, but if we're gonna take something up to the plate, I, I just want us to find the ability to be successful in doing that for everybody's benefit, and not do it for the sake of doing it. So that's, that's just what I continue to evaluate to myself.
Yes, Heather?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanna follow up on the, the focus group concept, that's something that we really haven't had a lot of discussion about. It was a recommendation, um, from the consultants, uh, and really needing feedback from the community about what, you know, what the scope of the project really, really ought to be and what the tolerances are of the community. And the purpose of fo- focus groups are, yes, some community engagement, but they're really to inform the project managers and the elected officials in preparation for broader community engagement, so it really isn't, it wouldn't be a standalone thing whatsoever, it would be part of a larger outreach process to, really to help inform the community, um, start to inform those people that we know of that may not be active in meetings but are active in the community, um, that have questions or don't know what's going on with the projects, uh, and to help them, um, help us inform the community, not necessarily to make decisions, but to have the information. So I would expect that to be part of a, um, just part of a larger process and, and not independent of something else.
Yes.
You know, and I, you know, and listening and reading through these, and I, I have not watched the, um, finance meeting yet this, this week, but the, the common thread that I see in this, and that has, like, this comment has been on here like every single time, is that no one disputes the need for the two facilities to be replaced and upgraded to meet modern operating standards in building codes. So, you know, and in identifying that everybody agrees that they need to be replaced, you know, and I get that nobody wants to pay for it, 'cause it's, you know, it's, if we get these things for free, it'd be like, great, you know, start tomorrow. Um, you know, at a, you know, like a three percent a year, um, cost increase, you know, historically, I mean, you know, just, again, you're talking almost a million five a year on a project this size, every year that we delay, that the cost goes up for the same thing. You know, and I, you know, the, and I'm, you know, I think that after you tour both of these facilities, that the need becomes more apparent, and that we have to do something, my fear is that as we delay, costs increase, and then our need increases, that, you know... My fear is that as we delay, costs increase, and then our need increases, that, you know, potentially, you know, the fire station, I think, has more of a risk associated with it, is that at a certain point, which we're kind of nearing, it's not, you know, hopefully this doesn't happen, but if we do have some sort of an event that causes an issue, you know, these numbers are going to go out the window if we had to do something on a short-term, you know, emergency basis. So, you know, in projects like this, I understand that, you know, costs are a factor and, you know, for everybody, not just, you know, and we heard comments tonight about the, you know, the aging population having difficulty. I have two kids, but then, you know, four or five years are going to be in college. You know, so it's, the costs are on both ends. It's not just necessarily those that are on fixed income. There's other young people in town such as myself, you know, that have kids. We have, you know, big bills coming as well in the near future. And we don't want to pay, you know, exorbitant taxes either. So I think it's, you know, across the board, I get the cost thing, you know, I think it hits everybody the same. But I, you know, I think that the need on these things that we've identified is significant enough that I think that, you know, what, you know, how we move forward or what we move forward, I think that we still need to, you know, keep pushing forward on these projects, you know, on some level or form. But, you know, I think after, if anybody has any doubts about it, they should, we should maybe set up tour dates again for people to go through, especially, you know, those that think that there's not a need or that the buildings are sufficient or we can wait five to 10 years to replace them. I would really encourage, you know, you to go tour the, both of those facilities. And perhaps the chief could bring down some of our new apparatus that don't fit in the old building to, you know, highlight, you know, the knee, the difference, right? You have, you know, it's just, I think that seeing is believing on some of this, on some level.
Thank you. I think that's been a part of some of his presentation.
Right.
Mr. Dunham?
I just wanted to point out, I know the board's aware, but just so others, I think the first money we got from Town Meeting to help start addressing these needs was a year or two before COVID. I think it was $50,000 to do a feasibility study just to find out what the issues were and what options were. And then Town Meeting gave us $300,000, I think, two and a half, three years ago, to take it to the next level. So those who've been on the project team from the beginning, you know, it's been a four-plus-year effort. I would think Patrick and Charlie have each been to 40 to 60 meetings over the last three to four years. You know, so there's a lot of work that's gone into this to get it to this point. And the money we gave was to do schematic design, nowhere near close to construction design. So we've sort of carried the ball as far as we can, knowing that we need to, you know, double-check a couple of things, see what else we can do to try to hold down costs, consider a location or two, and then, you know, reconvene. So that's going to take us a bit, but that's about where we are.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else on this one?
I guess my question would just be, as we go through focus groups and potential tour opportunities and other things, is I think it would be good if we put together some hypothetical timeline. We don't need to stick to it exactly, but I think that it would at least set some expectations for folks around what we're doing and where we're going, just from the perspective of this process. So I think that would be a good thing if we could do something like that. The other thing that I do think it's important, and I'm well aware of this given my service, but, you know, if something does happen to Station One at the Fire Department today, there are contingency plans in place to make sure that public safety needs are met, right? We're not out of business. So I just want to mention that without going into great detail about it, but those plans are, they do exist. They have been tested. They have been validated. Folks have been trained on them. So that is something that is in place.
No, we're not out of business, but the results might not be as effective either.
I'm not going to debate it, but I, I hear what you're saying, but I think, I think we have adequate plans in place to continue service to the downtown section of Sandwich in the event there is an infrastructure issue with Station One.
Yes, adequate.
That would, that would provide very similar response times to the district, that, that Station One Fire District.
Yes, adequate.
So if I'm wrong, I'm happy to be educated, but I think I'm close to, close to right.
We have really good contingency plans, but I think in the scheme of things, short-term, you know, we couldn't do those contingency plans for six months-
And I am-
-without displacing other things.
Entirely in agreement that it, building a new Station One and where, you know, the proposed location for the station, new Station One, I think that's without question the best location for a big pile of reasons, and I don't debate that for a second.
Thank you. Anybody else on this one? Okay. Moving on to In Good Health Donation Agreement and Host Community Agreement Waiver.
Yeah, so these next two topics on the agenda, it's fair to say, there's a lot of paperwork in your packets. I'll do my best to summarize them, but in the end, there's things that we've talked about a lot and probably won't take too much time. But as the board is aware, In Good Health, the local marijuana distributor for both retail and medical marijuana, has voluntarily been giving us, starting with this fiscal year now, $200,000 a year to pay for the two school resource officers from the police department to be in the schools. And so we had talked for some time with them about trying to memorialize a donation agreement, realizing just what a donation agreement says. It's voluntary. It's not enforceable under law. It's, that being said, we thought it was really important to put it in writing and to get down their longer-term commitment to keep this going. And so at the same time while we were talking about this, there have been significant changes in the regulations that the Cannabis Control Commission has issued across the state, and it basically invalidated a lot of the old provisions of our host community agreement that we worked really hard on, on both type of operations. It invalidated any sort of community impact payment. Basically, it really led us to question, why do we even have the host community agreement? And in speaking with our internal staff, especially the Director of Community Development, really felt that the zoning board of appeals had such, did such a good job with the conditions attached to the three different special permits that In Good Health has, that that basically provides us the protections of the host community agreement. So what we're recommending tonight is for the board to approve the donation agreement as it's been presented. That does include, has been fully vetted by town council. It's been talked about with the business owner, shared it with the police chief because obviously they're the primary beneficiaries along with the school. And I just want to stress for the public's sake that we're making it as binding as we possibly can, knowing that we can't make it fully binding. The term is for five years because, if you remember, our zoning that we adopted only allowed the ZBA to issue special permits for five years. So 99% sure when the current special permits expire, the business will ask the ZBA to renew those. And so the agreement even talks about their plan to seek those new special permits, and then that would change the term. So the timing is all laid out. So if for some reason they went out of business or moved or decided they weren't going to contribute it anymore, it would give us a full year to plan budgetarily to try to make up that difference. So it's as, and I should stress because this is something the select board really wanted us to count on before we had Town Meeting authorize counting on that money, is we wanted the money in hand before the vote was taken to expend it the next year. So the timing that's laid out here does all that. So I would recommend that we approve the donation agreement as presented, which the board would sign. And then similarly, we don't feel we need that host community agreements anymore. So there's a formal state form on an HCA waiver. And on that one, because there's only room for one person to sign, if you could authorize me to sign that, I can take care of that next week. And both documents that I mentioned need the approval of both the business and the town.
Make a motion that we authorize the town manager to sign and approve the In Good Health Donation Agreement and the Host Community Agreement Waiver Form from CCC as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hockter, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye for-
But a point of clarification. So I think, I think the request is to authorize the town manager to sign the Host Community Agreement Waiver Form and to adopt the donation agreement, engage in the donation agreement as presented, which would actually be executed by the board.
Okay.
Yes.
We might want to just modify that.
Sure. I'll accept the modification as presented by Mr. Sampson.
Well done.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Hockter. Second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye for zero. Okay. Recommendation for the Conservation Restriction on Idlewild Acres LLC.
Yeah, so in your packet, there's two pretty extensive documents and a letter from the Conservation Commission and from Town Council, Alex Wieschite. So I'll do my best to explain this one. As the board is aware, there's been a longstanding legal issue between the town, other levels of government, and a property. I think technically it would be in East Sandwich. This goes back more than a decade, some of these issues. And Attorney Wieschite has appeared, I would say, at at least five select board executive sessions over the last five years and probably two or three times that with the Conservation Commission. But positively, there was an agreement reached between the property owner, the town, and other signatories. And so the way an agreement like this works, especially with the establishment of a conservation restriction, by law, it has to go to the Conservation Commission first. So they voted and approved this on August 6, 2025. The staff who's been working on this for many years strongly recommends that the select board sign off. And so now that the conservation is approved, it's up to the select board to approve the conservation restriction for Idlewild Acres at 46 Roos Road. Once this is done and the board signs things, the town council will take care of all the work with the other side's attorney and work things out. But this has been a long effort on many boards, and we're thankful to the property owner for coming to an agreement here and with all the time that's been spent to try to do the right thing for the community.
Do we know, like, when the last time that a, you know, because I know that in the past, you know, specifically to this property, that there's been, I believe, agreements, and then beyond that, things changed on-site. Do we know when the last time an inspection occurred on the property that they are still in compliance before we sign this?
Yeah, I think people have been down there quite a bit, not only from the town staff, but the legal representatives of both sides to get this worked out.
Okay. And was the, because I think there was a federal one that was also that that closes-
Yeah, I want to say the EPA had a role to play as well. I think that's separate from this. Like, we really don't control their-
Right.
-their efforts.
And there's no risk for us signing this ahead of the EPA's or anything?
Because this is just between us and them.
Okay.
And again, Attorney Wieschite has really worked hard on this. This dates back to when Mark Alkowski was the Natural Resources Director and Dave DiCanto was the assistant doing a lot of the work. And since then, you know, Josh Wrigley has done a great job getting it this far. And then now Jenna Silva, and Jenna's spent a lot of time recently.
Questions, thoughts? Motion to approve?
Sure. Make a motion that we approve the conservation restriction on Idlewild Acres at 46 Roos Road, Sandwich, Massachusetts, as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hockter, second by Mr. Ellis. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's four zero. Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Other items not reasonably anticipated by the chairperson? I have none. On the old business, on the new business, other items not reasonably anticipated by the chairperson? I have none. Okay. Another opportunity for public comment. Yes, sir. Same criteria, but, but two minutes, please.
Yeah, Sean Murray, Sandwich again. Yes, and thank you for the dialogue and the DPW fire again, a little deep dive tonight. Appreciate it. I will tell you, I for one know the amount of hours you guys have been spending on this thing. I mean, it's been going on for, like Bud said, many years, a couple of town meetings, appropriations, so forth. What I think, the conversation, I'm going off the cuff here, I'm in trouble, but it's, the need is there. I got it. Okay? I think the town will understand that, you know, there's a definite need for these two buildings to be rehabbed. Okay? So it's the presentation to the public, how do we pay for it? That's why I started jumping on the capital stabilization fund. You present it in a manner that says, look, we can put some money aside, handful of years, make some appropriations, move some money into this, and come into it with at least a positive down payment of sorts. And it shows that there's some consideration being, like, I'll put it this way, when, when my wife and I think about some projects in the future, we need to think, we save money for it. It's almost like an American just borrow money. But you save a little bit. This is where capital stabilization fund come in. And maybe Bob will tell me there's a reason why we can't do it, but I'm pretty sure we can under mass general law. So, and go to Town Meeting, two-thirds vote, you know the drill, and put forth a plan, a package that says, look, we have a combination thing, we can put a few bucks in the bank, couple capital stabilization fund, and we can use the debt reduction. Put them into a strategic package. I think it gives a better presentation to the public. I think that's really what my whole thing was this evening, is that how it's presented to Town Meeting and the public writ large through the various outreach programs you're going to put together, which I'll, I'd be happy to join. So that's really kind of the thrust of it. But, but again, and I'll close it out, but thank you so much for everything you're doing. This is, this is a tough one. These things are really tough. And the backdrop with that water infrastructure. Anyway, enough of that. Thank you again for all of that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Closing remarks? Okay, just, as I do, please continue to maintain the situation in Eastern Europe, the conditions in the Middle East as overall threats to world peace, and your thoughts and prayers. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hockter, second by Mr. Ellis. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye for zero. Our next meeting is Thursday, September 11th at 7:00 PM here in historic Town Hall. Stay safe until then. Thank you.